If there are any Boy Scouts in the audience. Ooh, sorry. Can you please approach me? If there are any Boy Scouts in the audience? Yes, that includes Club Scouts.
Would board members come to the table, please? The September 22nd, 2016 Regular Meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the Spring Hill Elementary School Chamber Orchestra under the direction of Ruth Donahue. Thank you so much, Spring Hill Elementary and Mrs. Donahue. That was beautifully done.
Ms. Evans, I also want to thank all the parents for bringing your children out tonight. My goodness, this is the best way to start a meeting is to get to enjoy the wonderful talent of our students in FCPS. So, thank you for bringing them out tonight.
Thank you so much. Item 1.02, Announcements. A few announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is to be discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. Tonight's agenda is available by going to School Board on the FCPS homepage and selecting Board Docs under "Upcoming School Board Meetings." The meeting is also being streamed live online. Select "School Board" from the full menu, then click on the "Watch Live" button on the School Board Meetings webpage. Please turn off or silence your cellphones. I will now call on Ms. Chu for announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The month of October is Bullying Prevention Month. In an effort to promote awareness of school bullying, the Virginia School Board Association Board of Directors has designated the month of October as VSBA Bullying Prevention Month. Childhood bullying is a significant problem worldwide. It can cause school absenteeism, mental and physical stress, poor school performance, poor self-esteem, and in some cases, school violence. Statistics show that 160,000 children in the United States miss school each day as a result of being bullied. School Board members, superintendents, teachers, and parents play a critical role in creating a climate where bullying is not tolerated. It has been proven that when adults and children stand together, bullying ends. Fire Prevention Week 2016 focuses on the importance of smoke alarms. The official theme, "Don't Wait, Check the Date," encourages citizens to replace smoke alarms every 10 years. Working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in home fires in half. So during Fire Prevention Week, October 9th through 15th, fire safeties around the county will work with citizens to teach them about fire safety tips, encourage them to regularly test their smoke alarms, and to install smoke alarms on every level of their homes, and provide activities featuring Sparky the Dog. That is all.
Thank you, Ms. Chu. The next order of business is citizen participation. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. The School Board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with the decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to those who have come out to speak tonight. Tonight, 10 citizens have signed up to address the board. The first on their list, I'm going to let you know the first three so you can be prepared to come up and speak to us. Monique Barudy is our first speaker. Mike Nye is the second, and Robert Rigby the third. So, Ms. Barudy? Madam Clerk is the speaker? Okay.
The nondiscrimination policy 1450 was amended to include the words "gender identity." Let me remind you that before making this change, FCPS was meeting the needs of students and educators grappling with gender confusion and doing so on a case-by-case basis without a single complaint. You owe an apology to every member of the public that you misled when you said this change was required by law. You owe an apology for taking it upon yourselves to decide that gender no longer matters and for pushing that idea on every student and family in FCPS. You owe an apology for unilaterally deciding that transgenderism is a core value of FCPS and therefore, by extension, should be the core value of all families that send their children to these public schools. You owe an apology for every time you've sent communications to FCPS families and didn't mention the sweeping changes you were trying to make in our school system, thus neglecting to inform the people these changes affect the most. You owe an apology to every parent in FCPS that believes that parents should be their children's first educators as you are trying to take away the option for parents to decide what and when to teach their children about human sexuality. What happened to the caring culture you espouse in your strategic plan? What happened to, quote, "We commit to foster a responsive, caring, and inclusive culture where all feel valued, supported, and hopeful." I, along with many other parents I talked to, don't feel our interests or opinions are being represented, valued, or supported by this board. Our voices have been marginalized by your blatant disregard. You still have not deigned to create a public forum for discussion on this topic and seem to be trying your hardest to limit public engagement on this issue. You are not creating a caring and inclusive culture for the vast majority of families who are not struggling with gender confusion. This School Board and administration have not been responsive at all to myself or many other stakeholders who have asked for more information about why these changes are being made or the practical implications of these changes. I don't feel hopeful about the path of FCPS because most of the members of this School Board appear to have their own agendas and are deaf to the opinions of their stakeholders. I urge you to repeal the changes to policy 1450 and start down a path of true community engagement so your stakeholders can be hopeful again about the path of FCPS. Thank you.
Mike Nye?
Respectable School Board members, good evening. Today, I'm going to talk about strategic plan of our county's school system. The ultimate goal of our education is to develop, foster, allow in, caring, and nurturing environment for our students to grow, to learn, and to develop. Unfortunately, policy 1450 runs afoul of our strategic plan. Specifically, it creates intrusive and abusive, volatile, hostile environment to the students, especially girls. It opens access to the gender dysphoria people in the public restroom, public bathroom, public changing room, especially to the girls. Secondly, the School Board bows the pressure to the funding to trade the students' privacy, security, and safety to the dollars and the pennies. It's immoral, it's irrational, and irresponsible. I talked with a friend who lives in Japan, happened to be a teacher in Japan. I said about what happened here. We all know our American system publicly is far from perfect because our students lag behind from other countries in terms of science, technology, engineering, and math. After that, my friend shook his head in disbelief, widening his eyes in despair. He said, "Mike, we Japanese generation will bypass and surpass you because your school system wastes so much time and resources on the strange issues and strange matters." What he said shook my heart, rocked my bone, and made me ashamed. Why waste so much time and resource on the nonsensical and anti-common sense topic? Why not use our limited resource to the classroom instructions, teachers' training, and students' education? So, I strongly urge you, number one, to reconsider the policy 1450, the dire consequence; number two, to realign our focus to our strategic planning; and lastly, to reestablish the loving, nurturing, and caring environment for our children to be happy, to be healthy, to be well-balanced, and well-educated. Remember, our children are in your hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Rigby?
Good evening. My name is Robert Rigby. Tonight, the Board is considering a committee to deal with challenged materials. Over the past two decades, these materials have included several books related to LGBT topics, and the resulting discussions have included vivid testimony. My friend Meredith and I are concerned about this, as well as the increasingly bitter tone of the discourse during these board meetings, and we rise today to remind the public of the necessity of civility while discussing topics before this board. We must remember that the greater number of those who address topics of public concern have genuine interest in the well-being of all students. It is crucial that we recognize and acknowledge the good faith and valid concerns of those with whom we disagree, even though we may work to refute those concerns. With this in mind, it becomes clear that indications of bigotry, hatred, phobia, and intolerance are not helpful, as well as are not attacks via social media or blogs. They have the effect of coarsening the debate, needlessly antagonizing those with whom we must work and live, and making the necessary discussion more difficult. This reminder is especially applicable to members of this board who must set an example for all of us by respecting the opinions of all sides and refraining from words and labels that seem to serve to put up barriers. Stakeholders may disagree without being hateful, bigoted, or dangerous to children. Meredith?
I'm Meredith Blankenstein. I'm a mother to two FCPS elementary school students and a conservative Christian. While Robert and I disagree on the substance of issues, we agree that something must be done about the increasing bitterness between opposing factions. We recognize that there are people of goodwill on both sides who deserve the respect that we expect ourselves. And I want you guys to remember this, that no matter what we argue about, whether it's gender identity, Jeb Stuart, bathroom rights, all of those things, we need to remember that we are all formed in the image of God. And we all hurt, we all cry, we all care, and we all feel, just like everybody else. And we struggle with brokenness, and none of us is worthy of judging others. Personal attacks poison the environment we must all share. It filters down to our schools, falling on the backs of our most vulnerable children. This is especially true of students who identify as transgender as they're already burdened with so much and they do not need additional stress. So many of our LGBT children are hurting, and we need not make it worse. Similarly, the students and parents and faculty who disagree with policies, regulations, curricula, and controversial materials should not have to face demonization and name-calling by others. If we truly value our schools and our children, we have to remember that we're all members of Fairfax, and we should respect each other accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blankenstein and Mr. Rigby. Our next three speakers are John Kochka, Laslow Pentec, and Kathy Ruse. Mr. Kochka?
The mission statement of Fairfax County Public Schools' strategic vision reads, "Fairfax County Public Schools Inspires and Empowers Students to Meet High Academic Standards, Lead Healthy, Ethical Lives, and Be Responsible and Innovative Global Citizens." Ms. Hines? The Fairfax County Public Schools' Family Life Education Curriculum has ninth graders viewing the "Gonna Make It" video. The video implies that a father rapes his daughter at the edge of her bed. How is bashing fatherhood going to positively ignite our community? Ninth graders are smart enough to know that inappropriate touch is inappropriate touch, whether it's received from a stranger or a family member. My high school biology teacher would resign if he was compelled to facilitate this dubious curriculum. I am thrilled Jack Reeves enjoyed teaching me about the Krebs-Citric cycle rather than crabs, sexually transmitted disease, and paternal rape. Mrs. Kraus? How is discussing anal sex with an eighth grader going to help them live responsibly? Making students discuss these topics in groups makes many students uncomfortable, gives wise guys an opportunity to go straight to the gutter, and provides teachers with too much latitude to discuss sensitive topics. Mr. Moon? The Family Life Education teaches seventh graders about oral sex. How will this encourage healthy lives? I learned about human reproduction in the fifth grade when I went to the school library. The World Book Encyclopedia described intercourse, which resulted in a zygote, which resulted in a child. It did not describe a sex act for the sake of describing a sex act which did not result in a child. The World Book explanation was anatomical and innocent enough to allow for a more thorough conversation with my parents. So, why does the FLE feel compelled to teach students about oral sex? Mr. McElvein? The FLE shows fourth graders erect and flaccid penises. How does this make them an innovative global citizen? Fourth grade boys are familiar with their own anatomy, so what educational benefit occurs? The underlying assumption here is that if a respected authority approves an activity, it must be acceptable. It is clear the FLE is designed to desensitize, sexualize, and promote alternative lifestyles to children at a younger and younger age, starting in first grade. The strategic vision is a nonstarter as long as the Family Life Education curriculum exists. It is time to scrap FLE and start over. Thank you.
Laslow Pentec? Laslow Pentec? Mr. Pentec here? We'll go on to Kathy Ruse.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm a lawyer and a resident of Fairfax County, and the caring culture section of the strategic plan states, "Students will be encouraged and supported in making healthy life choices." One life choice that a majority of this board supports is transgenderism in children. I have a lot of compassion for a child struggling with gender dysphoria, but the medical profession is deeply divided on this issue and the proper response there, too. This board is not a medical board. It goes well beyond this board's competence to address this issue, not to mention certainly beyond its mandate. As a lawyer, I am troubled by the process. I will mention two points. The board has no authority to create new categories of nondiscrimination. That is a power that is vested in the General Assembly in the state of Virginia, yet the board did it anyway. Also, the measures passed by this board and proposed by this board hold people accountable for policies whose terms and consequences are undefined or ill-defined. This would never fly in the adult world, but maybe you can get away with it in a world of children. I'm a mother of young children, and I'm deeply concerned about what these measures will mean for the children of Fairfax County. Now, several doctors' groups have written this board urging you to reconsider the gender regulations. These groups include the American College of Pediatricians and the Association of American Physicians and Surgeons, among others, representing over 20,000 physicians and medical professionals in this country. And I now quote from their letter, "Affirmation of gender dysphoria has no basis in science and is highly controversial among experts." Highly controversial. Elsewhere in the letter, they state, "Eighty to ninety-five percent of youth with gender dysphoria before puberty will come to accept their biological sex by late adolescence." End quote. So, for most children, this is a transitory condition, and that's why affirming a child's rejection of his physical body is, quote, according to this professional letter, "Considered by many to be cooperating with a child's mental confusion and shepherding him along the path to a mental disorder." In fact, all children are put at risk by these policies. Quote, "Normalizing the myth of innate gender fluidity is a powerful and pathological way to weaken children by making them question their sense of safety, security, and certainty about anything and everything." End quote. As a taxpayer, as a lawyer, as a mother, I implore you, don't play gender politics games with children. It's not a fair fight. Thank you.
The next speaker is Alice Duo, to be followed by Bonnie Burkhardt. Alice Duo?
Nine-year-old Lily screamed as she ran out of the bathroom, face pale with fears. A man just exposed himself. A 23-year-old teacher was walking by in a dark alley beside her apartment, and she heard a panting. She turned around, it was a man leaning over, pants at his ankles. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. These are parents' worst nightmares. Lily is my best friend, and the 23-year-old is me, Alice Duo, standing before you. I'm here tonight because I don't want this to happen to our children. I'm here tonight to challenge the lack of the School Board in creating a caring culture as outlined in your strategic plan. I'm here to challenge, also to express my compassion for the transgender students' rights and promote a win-win solution. Now, as parents, my kids go to school every day happy, ready to learn, and want to change the world when they grow up. And as parents, we believe that they are in the right hands. But with a policy 1450 that opens doors to a subclass of male transgenders who are still erotically attracted to females, that belief has been reduced to a mere dream. Is that too much for a mother to ask? We want to protect our children from the threats, not increase the exposure. So, I work with a transgender every day. My company created a separate bathroom for her. We did not cut off our right arm in order to please the left arm. In 1960s, America started the disability rights movement. We modified the streets, the buildings, with ramps for people with disabilities. What a progress, but we didn't flatten all the steps, all the stairs. It was a win-win situation. So, why can't we focus on a win-win solution at more unisex bathrooms? Why can't we create a caring culture regardless of one's sexual orientation? As Mike mentioned earlier, other countries are focusing their precious resources to develop their children in a competitive world. Japan's classroom has no AC, not because they can't afford it, it's because they are training their future generation for grit, for endurance, for physical and mental toughness. And here in Longfellow, several hundred seventh-grade teachers, students, have no science teacher, no English teacher, because the best, the good teachers are leaving for private school. So, without a focus on the fundamentals of education, what's our chance as a great nation to stand on the world stage? So, ladies and gentlemen, Lily and I had to endure the embarrassing sexual exposure. But I have a question, like many of our children will be, and I have a question for each one of you. Do you choose to expose our innocent children to such a haunting experience at elementary school, middle school, or high school? Is this an American dream or a nightmare?
Could you wrap up, please?
Thank you.
Next speaker is Bonnie Burkhardt, to be followed by Chaney Mullins.
Hello. My name is Bonnie Burkhardt, and I've had two daughters go through the Fairfax County School District. My oldest daughter became seriously ill in her freshman year. It was mono, but it went undiagnosed for a year and a half. During that time, my daughter received no education whatsoever for nine months straight, spanning two school years. She was prohibited from entering the school buildings because she had a fever over 100 degrees and no diagnosis. She was discriminated against because she was considered a threat to the physical well-being of the other students because she might make them sick. As a parent, I wanted my child to go to school, but I also respected the rights and physical health of the other students and their parents. My heart goes out to students who have gender identity issues and their families, just like I cared about my own daughter. However, your approach to the transgender issue is totally different. Students are not just physical beings, they're also psychological, spiritual, and moral beings. Your policy allows a transgender child to use whatever bathroom, locker room, or shower they choose can cause psychological, moral, and spiritual harm to the other children who need to use those facilities. As board members, you were elected to care about the culture and morals of the community that elected you, and your nondiscrimination transgender policy violates that trust that we placed in you. In my daughter's case, the school didn't care if my daughter got an education, only that the rules were followed. So, nine months into it, we hired a lawyer to go after Fairfax County. to go after Fairfax County schools. That was the only reason my daughter finally received access to a few online classes and an occasional home teacher. There were other ways to accommodate transgender children and provide them an education without violating the morals and culture of this community. I would like to remind you that Fairfax County has one of the highest number of lawyers per capita in the country, and you are messing with their children. If you think you have legal fees and budget problems now, just wait till a girl athlete is injured when she's tackled by a boy three times her size because he's on the girls' team. Just wait till a girl gets pregnant on an overnight school trip because she's forced to share a bed with a boy who just claimed he was a girl that week. The teachers are also prohibited from telling the girls or her parents because they risk being fired for discrimination. To the nine of you who voted for this transgender policy, you're obviously incapable of discriminating between the cultural morals of this community and your own political agenda. You're incapable of discriminating between the wants of a child who needs help and the right to privacy of the rest of the student body. We, the parents and voters of Fairfax County, are capable of discriminating between those board members who care about our community's culture and morals and the nine of you who do not. Shame on you.
Next speaker is Chaney Mullins, to be followed by Christopher Ayala.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Chaney Mullins, representing Concerned Women for America, the nation's largest public policy women's organization. And tonight, I would like to explore why you're right to have a strategic planning process include a caring culture. And I believe a synonym for caring could be the word comfortable. It's important that all our students are comfortable. LGBT activists care that students struggling with gender identity feel comfortable. Concerned parents want their children to feel comfortable by protecting same-sex bathrooms. We all agree comfort is important, especially in these formative years. I can imagine it being very difficult if I felt like a boy inside. I can imagine feeling like a boy, that using the girls' restroom would be uncomfortable. It would feel unsafe. Feeling like a boy, I would want to be where the boys are. I would feel like I didn't belong in the girls' restroom. Naturally, there would be something in me wanting to be matched to the same sex in terms of intimate spaces and experiences like changing and using the bathroom. So under one scenario, a solution would be that I, since I identify as a boy, would go use the boys' restroom to feel comfortable. But there is a problem in the logic here. By going to use the boys' restroom, I am unwittingly subjecting the boys there to the same kind of discomfort that I am there to escape. Though I would feel like a boy, to them, I could look like a girl, and that would make them uncomfortable. Again, I am leaving the girls' bathroom because I feel like a boy. I don't want to go to the bathroom with girls. Then I turn around and go into the boys' bathroom, making them uncomfortable if they see that I am biologically a girl. I don't think it is fair to them to make them uncomfortable when I know how bad being uncomfortable feels, and I don't think it honors the privacy and experiences of each student sufficiently. Now, the school board may feel that the boys in the boys' restroom don't have the right to feel uncomfortable with this transgender student. Others believe that as a biological girl, a transgender student should be encouraged to feel fine in the girls' bathroom because it's her sex at birth and her anatomy. But regardless of your opinion on how both groups of students should feel, for now, can we work together to come up with solutions that stop idealizing the "should" and start realizing that discomfort is very real on both sides? There are ways to accommodate both the uncomfortable transgender student and the vast majority of gender-conforming students who would be made uncomfortable by this bathroom policy change. There were accommodations being made with the use of staff bathrooms. Now, the nondiscrimination policy remains in effect, and the lack of procedural guidelines only means the policy can be interpreted willy-nilly. Now we have uncomfortable transgender students, uncomfortable gender-conforming students, and now uncomfortable citizens who feel slighted in this process. In this way, the school board has added more discomfort and division to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher Ayala.
Chairman Evans, Superintendent Garza, and members of the school board. I thank you in advance for the opportunity to come before you today on a topic of significant concern to the at-large parent community with regards to their children attending Fairfax County Public Schools, that topic being the recent and ongoing approval of applications to install cell towers on Fairfax County Public School property. For the reasons I'll further articulate in my statement, I propose that the school board take three actions. First, the board should adopt an immediate moratorium on the processing of any pending or in-process applications to erect cellphone towers on Fairfax County Public School-owned property. Second, the school board should rescind its current delegations of authority regarding cell tower applications and exercise direct authority over this controversial business activity to ensure full and appropriate consideration can be given to community and parent input on a pre-decisional basis. Third, I'd recommend the school board revisit its initial decision to allow the application and approval process for the application pertaining to building a cell tower at Crossfield Elementary School to proceed as its impact is adverse and inconsistent with the Fairfax County Comprehensive Plan. In quickly educating myself on the policies, processes, and entities involved in cell tower applications on FCPS-owned properties, I've learned the following. There's a Board Policy 8335 entitled Wireless Telecommunication Facilities that provides access to school properties for the location of mobile and land-based facilities in part to obtain revenue for the benefit of FCPS. The same policy states that such facilities will not be installed on elementary, middle, or high school buildings, and that community input will be solicited prior to any decision on telecommunication facility applications. Further, the same policy delegates the decision-making authority on these applications, including their approval or denial, to the Department of Facilities and Transportation Services. Based on my attendance at a September 20 local land use committee meeting at which one of these applications was presented, it was abundantly clear to me that the community at large had been denied the opportunity for pre-decisional input. Further, I've also learned that Section 4 of FCPS School Board Policy 8330, entitled Granting Easements and Permits for Construction on School Property, indicates that the easements and permits can only be granted when construction in no way will permanently damage, interfere with, or limit the present or future use of the property and will not endanger the general health, safety, or welfare of individuals using the property. This requirement cannot be met if cell tower construction on school property is allowed to proceed as their presence so proximate to school buildings creates potential health and risks, including risks associated with fire due to lightning strikes or equipment explosions, risks to safety associated with possible tower collapse, possible criminal activity, and vehicular dangers. In closing, I want to state that I am a proud member of the Fairfax County community and relocated here 11 years ago in large part because of the reputation of the school system. I believe that the school board has stated that it is firmly committed to citizen involvement and sees it as the backbone of their school system being successful. However, I do see a disconnect with the actions taken recently by the board with regards to cell towers being located on school property and their written policies and word, and would ask for your reconsideration. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to see if Mr. Pentec has arrived. All right, Mr. Pentec, if you would like to come and speak. I understand most of us were at back-to-school nights tonight as well.
I'd like to address the board about an important piece absent from the strategic plan for FCPS. The basic design of FCPS is fundamentally flawed, and as a result, there's much waste, fraud, and abuse that occurs and must be stopped. A recent example illustrates the dismal state to which things have deteriorated currently. Frankly, this is about the saddest story I've ever heard. My apologies to Ford Maddox. Ford, please keep in mind, it is not the problem, but a symptom of the problem that has manifested, and I'll give you a solution at the end. Shocked? Yes, so am I. Before you object, please note that these were not my words. They are yours. I was, what I was reading was quoted verbatim. The source is the opening of a book that is mandatory reading English class assignment for my daughter that was given here at FCPS. Thus, objection on your part would be dishonest and hypocrisy. The board expects that speakers would deliver their comments with decorum, et cetera, and so on, and those requirements are listed twice in your publication regarding citizen participation. There's also a 38-page guide concerning students' rights and responsibilities to navigate safely, blah, 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 which explicitly forbids vulgar, profane, obscene, and patently offensive, looter, indecent language in all forms. The reason I said blah, blah, blah and skipped some is this might, we wrote this, my daughter wrote some of this, and I'm not going to have time in three minutes to cover it all. But this language is banned here, and the children can be suspended and punished for using such language. The syllabus for the very same English class forbids the same. Yet the assignments cannot be read aloud without violating the class, school, and board policies. You should, at an absolute minimum, be required to abide by your own rules and standards. Experience shows that FCPS does no such thing. Moreover, this is not an obscure, isolated, or one-time occurrence. It is the third consecutive year we have endured the base and worst perverted garbage of all kinds in the curriculum. One such book used was deemed inappropriate by the author himself. Despite complaints, your degenerate teachers and reprobate staff regularly assign multiple offensive, inappropriate materials without any risk of consequences. It is simply conduct beyond the pale. My child described the experience as not just unsettling, not just undermining any respect for the schools, but being mind-raped by the teacher. How about discipline in dismissing these incorrigibles? How dare you? For those of you shaking your heads and getting ready to cite your favorite, celebrated authors, authors, and so forth, that use vulgar language, consider this. Adult material, if anywhere, belongs in college. If you want to bring university-level adult material into English class, start with authors like Strunk and White. Until then, get the smut out of the classroom. FCPS claims that kids come first. The white elephant in the room is that the emperor has no clothes. Not just on this topic, but on many others. This disgusting state comes from a broken system that allows infamous acts to thrive.
Would you wrap up, please?
I will not continue on with, list them all.
I'd ask you to wrap up.
I will wrap up. The solution is to create an office of an inspector general. An independent IG with investigative powers will more than pay for itself. Such an IG is not only required, but is the gold standard for every government bureaucracy.
Mr. Pentec, your time is up.
What we have instead is an idiocracy gone wild. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I don't know anyone else here.
I call on, the next item is Student Representative Matters, and I call on Ms. Chu.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To start off, I would like to recognize two scouts in the audience. Joshua from Spring Hill, a club cub scout here to support his mom who spoke recently, and Quentin from Oakden High School, completing his citizenship in the World Merit Badge. If you could please stand to be recognized.
Thank you. So within this first month of school, it's exciting that we've already had many academic achievements. Recently, it was announced that 213 FCPS students were named National Merit semifinalists, 119 of which came from my homeschool TJ. I cannot test as well as any of you can, but I commend you on your great academic excellence. In addition, I have made my final nominations to the citizen advisory committees, and would like to note that I took extreme care specifically for the Family Life and Education Curriculum Advisory Committee. I do believe that this year, the student representation on the committee will reflect the views of the student body across the county. In addition, this Monday will be the launch of the Superintendent's Student Advisory Committee. I'm excited to discuss these three topics this year on mental health, school environment, and student balance and wellness. And having heard all of this today, I believe that these three topics will truly encompass the issues in the upcoming years. In addition to any students watching tonight, I would like to take note that the 2016-17 Student Leadership Development Program application is open. This is an absolutely wonderful way to gain insight into the governance of our school system. And for any high school or alternative high school sophomore or junior, I encourage you to take this opportunity. In addition, the Fairfax County Student Human Rights Commission has applications open. This is the region's first commission comprised entirely of high school students with a mission to promote diversity and foster a greater understanding of differences among youth in Fairfax County through various activities. So to students who would like to assume leadership roles in the community and gain better understanding of how our system works, I encourage you to check out these two applications. In addition, as my school visits start this year, I'm taking it upon myself to visit every high, secondary, and alternative high school. And I will be meeting with the LGBT students in these communities as well as student leaders who feel differently about these topics to understand how students feel. So I would just like to make it known that having taken all of this into account today, I will be valuing the students' opinions for the entirety of the year. That is all.
Thank you, Ms. Chu. We move on to Item 2.03, the Opening of Schools Report, and I call on Dr. Garza.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board and members of the FCPS community. I'm delighted to report that we had a great start to the 2016-2017 school year. We welcomed over 186,000 students, and we welcomed also over 1,800 new teachers to our system. I want to congratulate and thank all of our wonderful FCPS staff throughout the division, our principals, our facilities, custodial teams, our transportation department, which I understand our buses run smoother than ever, our human resources department, clearly that did a lot of heavy lifting this summer, all of FCPS for the planning and the work that was done to prepare for the 2016-2017 school year, and it made it one of the best starts ever. We have some exciting and important instructional initiatives underway this year, such as project-based, problem-based learning, our new Assessment Universal Screener pilot that is going on in 15 schools. Very excited about that. Our FCPS ON work around instructional technology, and the continued, very successful work with our Project Momentum schools. We have prepared the traditional PowerPoint for the Opening of Schools Report. It looks like this. This report is available for our board and the public on board docs. But we are doing something a little different this year, and I will not be walking through the PowerPoint. Our communications team pulled some highlights from the report and prepared this video, and so we'll be showing that video right now.
My hopes for the first day are to just really get to meet everybody and make connections and get to know the students because it's their first day, it's my first day, and I'm just really excited to be here.
The first day is going very smoothly. We had 18 buses come in this morning and about eight or nine small buses as well, so everything was smooth. We had a great staff to make sure everybody got in and where they're supposed to be for their first period classes.
We are actually going to be the largest elementary school in Fairfax County Public Schools, and I venture to guess probably in the DC metropolitan area. Over time, we can anticipate having about 1,600 students come through the threshold of our doors each day.
We all know that in today's world, technology must be a part of the learning experience. While technology is only one of many resources our teachers use to provide students with meaningful learning experiences, it is a powerful one. Technology not only allows our teachers to personalize different learning activities for students, but also opens up a world of creativity for our students to demonstrate what they have learned.
Everybody tries to find, what's a single fix? What's one thing I can put in place to turn a school around? And there really isn't. It's really a combination of high-yield strategies and structures with a tight focus that are really helping us to achieve the results that we are.
We've learned that through research that kids that have access to fresh fruits and vegetables will consume more. We've learned that you can modify eating We've learned that you can modify eating behaviors and serve as educators in helping
Work hard to earn the internship, because it's not given. This is not just free willingly given to anybody. You've got to show that you really want it and you're dedicated, and it just makes us want to compete, knowing that we will get the skills needed to be in a professional
Thank you. And as I pointed out, the traditional PowerPoint with a lot more information, and it is available to the School Board and to the public, should you wish to go through the full report. And then just finally, I want to convey to this Board, all of our employees, and our overall community, my deepest appreciation. I know that I shared some surprising news this past Monday, and since the announcement, I've received hundreds of very thoughtful notes wishing me well. Thank you for all your wonderful support, it really means a lot. This system, Fairfax County Public Schools, is truly remarkable in every way, and we thank you very much for this opportunity to talk about what a great opening we had for this school year. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board.
Thank you so much, Dr. Garza. It was a lovely video. We now turn to item 2.04, FY 2018 Fiscal Forecast, Including Use of Potential Meals Tax Revenue. I call on Dr. Garza to introduce the fiscal forecast presentation.
This report was shared with the Board. There's been some updates since our work sessions, some minor updates to reflect some of the conversations the Board had, but we felt like the Chair, Vice Chair, and others on the Board felt like it was important for our public to also see the fiscal forecast, so they have a good picture of where we think fiscal year 18 and beyond. I think our video is showing again. There we go. Okay. So I'm going to turn over to Kristin Michael, our wonderful Assistant Superintendent for Financial Services. She will walk through our fiscal forecast and then talk a little bit about some of the information that we know is important for consideration around the meals tax. All yours, Kristin.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity this evening to go back through the fiscal forecast for FY 18 for our school operating fund. So with the support from the community, the county, and the state, FCPS was able to avoid reductions to instructional programs in this school year. In fact, we began the process of rebuilding, making an initial investment of $40 million to begin to close the gap between our teacher salaries and the surrounding market average. And in addition, we were able to invest significant dollars to eliminate large elementary classes of 30 students or above. As we look forward, though, we do face continued challenges. Compensation will continue to be a priority, and additional investments will be required. Student enrollment growth is still projected to continue to increase, and the state's revenue shortfall for FY 16 will impact the school system's budget for both this school year and our FY 18 fiscal forecast. So on July 8th, 2016, Governor McAuliffe announced that the state's general fund revenue collections for the year that just ended were more than 1% below the state's official revenue forecast, and as a result of that, the state is required to reforecast revenue for both FY 17 and FY 18. As a result of that, the revised revenue forecast will reduce revenue by $1.2 billion over the next two fiscal years of the biennium, and that state revenue shortfall in forecasting will impact FCPS's revenue. The interim forecast did note that increases for state workers, faculties, teachers, and deputies, while those priorities remained a priority, that the state would redirect $125 million that they had set aside for the state's share of pay increases to help address the fiscal shortfall for FY 17. So as a result of that, the funding that was included in the state budget to provide salary increases for FCPS's teachers will not be funded. That includes $4.4 million in FY 17 and potentially $7.6 million in FY 18. Due to the uncertainties surrounding that state budget, though, FCPS will continue to honor its commitment to providing our employees the salary increases that were adopted as part of the School Board's budget for this current school year. As we look at our revenue forecasts moving forward, in each year's forecast, we assume the county transfer will be level to help us project our need. Then if we look at the forecast for our state funding, for both sales tax and state aid, this fiscal forecast reflects the state's projection that was included when they released their biennial budget. So both of these increases were projected prior to the state needing to reforecast revenue. So both of these items may be overly optimistic. We were projecting a 3% increase in sales tax, which totaled $5.8 million, and we were also forecasting an increase in state aid of $18.8 million. When we look at our other revenue categories, federal aid, which is primarily impact aid, was projected to remain level, and our other categories of revenue, Fairfax City and other tuition, totaled $1.3 million. For our beginning balance funding, FCPS currently has $22.2 million set aside, but because we have beginning balance funding in our current year budget of $33.1 million, that does leave us with a gap of $10.9 million as we look to begin our FY 18 budget. When we look at the expenditure side of our projections, we're projecting continued enrollment growth for FY 18 of 470 students for a total of $4.3 million. We're also projecting increased costs for retirement. First, the Virginia retirement system, the state accelerated the rate increase from FY 19 to FY 18, and that will increase FCPS's costs by $25.5 million in FY 18. We're also projecting retirement rate increases for our local plan ERFC and for the county plan, which some of our employees participate in. For health rate increases, we're projecting an increase of 7.2%. That's a 3% increase, which is lower due to the cost containment we've put in place and our recent claims experience. Lastly, we have contractual increases of $4.1 million. When we look at our projected compensation needs for FY 18, we have a step increase for all of our employees totaling $44 million. We have another investment in our teacher scale. We're working to increase our teacher scale, and this is an investment of $44.3 million, and that represents a continued phase-in as we work to get our teacher salaries to the market average. Next, we have a market scale adjustment for our non-teacher scale positions of 1%, that's $7.9 million, and the market scale adjustment for the teacher scale was included in our teacher scale phase. Lastly, we have our base savings, which is savings that we recognize each year from recurring position turnover, and that saves us $20.7 million. So I'd like to take just a minute to talk a little bit about our teacher salary scale. A new teacher salary scale was developed and shared with the School Board as part of our compensation study. We're looking to have market-competitive salaries with a target range between 95% and 105% of the market. We're also looking to implement faster career earnings while maintaining our annual pay step progression. So when we look at our teacher scale investment that we're recommending as part of our FY 18 budget, as I said earlier, that totals $44.3 million, and that recommendation will close the gap between our current pay range and the projected market average over a period of three years for this recommendation. Now, each year, that projected market average is going to continue to shift as our surrounding school districts continue to make salary increases. So while we were able to fund $40 million in FY 17, that was to help us begin to close the gap with our FY 16 market average. So to look at that in a slide, this slide shows teacher salary scales, and it's a complex slide, so I'll walk through this graph, starting with the bottom line through the top. The very bottom line in the green color is our FY 16 salary scale. The next line up, which is a maroon color, shows our FY 17 scale, and you can see there the investment that we made, that $40 million, how it increased teacher salaries during the mid portion of their career. The next line up is our FY 18 implementation plan. So with the $44.3 million we've included in our FY 18 forecast, that would increase our salaries to that dashed yellow line. The next line up from that is a blue line, and it's the FY 18 projected market average. As you can see, even after we make this investment in FY 18, we're still going to be below the projected FY 18 market average. Now, if we're looking ahead to the future, you can also see on this slide, in the dashed blue or purple line, our projected future scale, right? And that is above the FY 18 market average, because we are having a phased-in approach, and it will take us approximately three years to get there. And then the last lines on this graph do show two competitor school districts. That is in the red and the green lines, and those were their salaries for FY 18. So while you can see we began to make progress in FY 17, we still have a ways to go as we continue to improve our teacher salaries. We also have in our FY 18 fiscal forecast key strategic investments in the classroom totaling $15 million. There's funding for textbooks, including the purchase of textbooks for social studies in FY 18. An additional funding is needed to begin a seven-year replacement cycle for math, science, language arts, and world languages. We have funding for student technology. One of our key initiatives is FCPS ON, which was shown in the back-to-school video this evening. This continues that phased-in approach. We have funding for assessment tools, a universal screener, which will help provide us with targeted intervention and acceleration for students. And we have funding in our forecast to continue to reduce the waiting list for preschool. So in summary, FY 18 had required expenditures of $58.4 million. The salary increases that I went through for FY 18, after being offset by base savings, totaled $75.5 million, and the identified strategic investments that I just discussed totaled 15. When all of those expenditure increases are offset by that projected revenue increase, which again, may be overly optimistic based upon the state, it does show that we have a projected gap of $134 million for FY 18. So I'd also like to note that while that fiscal forecast shows the gap, we still have many unfunded needs that were not included in the forecast. It includes additional adjustments needed for compensation to bring our salaries to the market average, funding to address large class sizes at middle and high schools to enhance elementary autism, and fund a learning management system. The forecast doesn't include additional support for students through parent liaisons, psychologists, and social workers, and it also doesn't reflect additional funding that we need in order to implement a computer and bus replacement cycle and to enhance our preventative and major maintenance. So as we look towards FY 18, we know that we have many fiscal uncertainties. The state's economic conditions may impact our budget, both for this fiscal year and next. We have meetings scheduled with the Board of Supervisors and School Board to begin our discussion for FY 18, and we will continue to watch as our enrollment continues to grow. So that's our fiscal forecast for FY 18. I'd now like to go through a presentation on the meals tax that was also shared at last Monday's work session.
Kristin, before you do that, let me just make a couple of comments. At the bottom of each of the slides, there's a statement asterisk, and it's very important. A fiscal forecast does not reflect any decision points. It's simply a projection of what we may have ahead. It projects what kind of revenue, it projects what kinds of, potentially what kind of required increases we'll have to include in the budget, and it also looks at projected investments. Now, we know that we're very early in the process, so when we get to the final budget adoption period in May, the budget may look very different than what we just showed you just now. This is the beginning process, where we start to outline what those challenges we may face, kind of what the financial picture looks like, and as we move forward, we'll refine and get more specific about some of these decision points. But it's just to really set the stage for the development of the fiscal year 18 budget, which is, we know, a very long process of about nine months. So we're just beginning that process right now. Thank you, Kristin.
Thank you. So now I would like to share some information and facts regarding the meals tax that are from the county website, as well as the School Board's priority for any potential meals tax funding. So a meals tax is a tax on all ready-to-eat prepared foods, and the Board of Supervisors does not have the authority to implement a meals tax unless it's approved by the voters. So in the November 8th general election, Fairfax County voters will be asked to vote yes or no on a meals tax question. The question asks voters to allow the Board of Supervisors to impose up to a 4% meals tax on certain prepared foods, and that would be paid by residents, commuters, and tourists. If the majority of voters approve the meals tax, the Board of Supervisors would dedicate that revenue to two purposes. First, 70% of the revenues would be dedicated to Fairfax County public schools, and second, 30% of the net revenues would be dedicated to county services, capital improvement, and property tax relief. The meals tax, if approved by voters, is estimated to generate $99 million in the first year, with 28% of that revenue coming from non-county residents. So the Board of Supervisors is seeking the authority to impose a meals tax to reduce the county's dependence on real estate tax. Currently, about 65% of Fairfax County's general fund revenue comes from real estate taxes, and state law limits what the county can tax and how it may otherwise raise revenue. A 4% tax is equivalent to 4 cents on the current FY 17 real estate tax rate, and when the real estate tax rate is increased, it impacts all property-owning residents, and these tax rates are typically passed on through renters. If a meals tax is passed, it would apply to tourists, commuters, and travelers, as well as residents who dine out. And a meals tax is a common source of revenue for other local governments in Virginia. So if approved, a 4% meals tax will add 4 cents to every dollar spent dining out in Fairfax. For example, a $10 fast casual meal would cost an additional 40 cents, and a $100 restaurant meal would cost an additional $4. When our Fairfax County residents go out to eat, many times they're paying a meals tax on other local governments. For example, other jurisdictions who charge a 4% meals tax include Arlington, Alexandria, Falls Church, and Fairfax City. Herndon has a 2.5% meals tax. Vienna has a 3% meals tax, and the District of Columbia charges a 10% meals tax. If approved, the meals tax is projected to generate $99 million in the first year, again, with 28% of that coming from non-county residents. Of that revenue, FCPS would receive approximately $67 million. The School Board commits to dedicate funding from the meals tax to these two areas. First, the vast majority to ensuring competitive teacher salaries, and second, the remaining funds to critical classroom resources. Thank you.
And then finally, I want to add, the reason we felt it important, and this was stated at the work session last week, about if the meals tax were to pass, how would the money be spent? I know School Board members and members of the leadership team have been asked that question, and I think we owe that answer to the public, and so the Board spent a good bit of time talking about if, in fact, it were to pass, you know, how could we articulate to the community, communicate to the community how those monies would be allocated? So that is the purpose of this portion of the presentation. Thank you, Kristin, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Michael. I have a first question from Mr. Moon.
Thank you for the presentation again. I have a couple of questions, one of which was already asked at the work session, but just for the public, that I'm going to ask the same question again. But let me start with something that I did not ask at the work session. That's on slide number 14. The $14.9 million, the projected revenue increase, where can I find the 14.9 from in other slides?
So $14.9 million is the total of the revenue adjustments that appear on slides 6 and slide 7.
6 and 7.
Correct. So it's the increase, projected increase in state funding from sales tax and state aid on slide 6, right? As well as the adjustments on slide 7 to Fairfax City tuition and other revenue, and those are offset by that decrease in beginning balance funding. So the net of all of those is the $14.9 million.
Okay, thank you so much. That answers my question. And then I will go to slide number 12, where we see many different lines. Let me go to that 12. Okay. Okay. That dotted purple line, proposed future scale. And we're not going to get there until FY 2020, is that correct?
That is correct. So that's projected.
If you do three-year implementation.
Correct.
It will take us three years. So that won't happen until FY 2020. And that dotted line is above FY '18 projected market average, which is that blue line. However, by 2020, that blue line may be above.
Correct.
Above the purple dotted line.
That is.
Even though we can never tell what the other jurisdiction might not do, but if you assume that they will do their regular step plus cost of living adjustments, that can easily go above our purple dotted line.
That is correct. That purple dotted line is projected to be within that target range of 95% to 105% of where that market average will be in fiscal year 20, 2020.
Is there any way for you to give us another line, not tonight, which may show, based upon past history? You can use last five years, last 10 years. You know, if the other jurisdictions did the same for the last couple of years, will that projected market average for FY 2020 be? I just want to see what the game might look like between the purple dotted line and projected market average.
Correct. And absolutely, we'll be able to use historical trend data to project out where the other jurisdictions will be after they implement a market scale adjustment in those future years to show you that projected 2020 market average and how it will line up with our projected future scale.
Thank you so much.
May I add to this line of questioning? Mr. Moon, you made a point, and it's a correct one. This is a dynamic dilemma that we have, you know, as we're trying to catch up, you know, the market's also moving every year. So that's number one. Secondly, your first question, you said that we would be phasing this in over a three-year period. We're projecting to do it in that way, Mr. Moon, but ultimately, that would be the decision that the Board would have to make in the budget development process, whether that be a two-year implementation, a three-year implementation, or whatever. So we can't definitively say it would be 2020 tonight, but throughout this process, I know the Board wants to aggressively implement it. It depends upon how much revenue we have available to us.
Absolutely, absolutely. That was understood. And of course, you know, a large, you know, factor for this to happen might be whether, you know, what will happen to a meals tax referendum in November?
Do I have other Board members who have questions or comments?
I also want to remind the public, there was a lively discussion about this presentation at the Board work session earlier this week. So this is a little bit of a repeat for our Board members. So if you're not seeing a lot of questions tonight, it does not connote lack of interest, I will assure you of that. We just felt like it would be a good presentation for the public to hear in this way.
I have Mrs. Schultz.
Did you queue me up, Dr. Garza?
We'll see.
We'll see. So never to reject the opportunity to be lively, I guess. I see that as a golden invitation, although I did flip the button before you said what you said. So, look, you know, the key phrase here is certain prepared foods. And the demure reference to liveliness at the earlier meeting was, I'm sure, reserved for yours truly, in that I am astounded, and said so at the work session on Monday, that this Board endeavors to spend one second of time opining on what it may get for Christmas if you taxpayers endeavor to open up your wallets and give us more of your money. And I am frustrated on your behalf as a public student, as a public servant, when we've just had a presentation where we're talking about, you know, teacher lanes and trying to become comparable, and that we've spent a year and a half or two years wringing our hands about losing teachers because we don't have comparable pay in some of the salary scales. And yet, we spend time looking at the potential of money, the potential of something coming our way, without having the discussion in-house about how to do it with the resources that we already possess. A report just came out that said for the last 16 years, more than 50% of American households are earning the equivalent of less money than they did 16 years ago. More than 50%. And I know that Fairfax County is generally recession-proof, but that doesn't mean that the average homeowner and average taxpayer isn't going to be heavily hit by something like this, because it isn't the question of whether you go out to a restaurant. It isn't the question of, you know, treating the individuals within your family to an extravagance or a luxury. This is every single restaurant meal and every prepared food that you would buy in a grocery store. And, you know, we are and have the most expensive grocery bills in the United States of America in Fairfax County already. And I don't think it's fair, at this point, without a real discussion about what we're doing in-house with the generous $2.7 billion and nearly 54% of the county's budget that FCPS already takes, when 75% of the people in Fairfax County don't have children in the public schools, that we don't talk about the return on investment to the taxpayers that we already are accountable for, but have no taxing authority. And this is a long way around the bush, and I think it's a very dangerous thing for us to be throwing up, gee, wouldn't it be great if, if you give us this, look how much better we'll be at handling your money? And I was not happy about it Monday, and I'm not happy about it tonight. And the reason I'm not happy is for you, not for me.
Mrs. Strauss?
Thank you. Virginia is a Dillon Rule state, and that means that local government in Virginia has only those powers specifically given to it by the General Assembly. And in Virginia, Fairfax County is an urban county form of government. Cities and towns such as the city Fairfax, the town of Herndon, they actually have more power to create a balanced menu of revenues to support the services that are required to be provided to citizens. There's been a long discussion that in Fairfax County, the Board of Supervisors are forced to rely unusually on residential real estate tax to provide the services, whether at school, police, fire, whatever services are required to maintain the quality of life that citizens expect in Fairfax County. There was a list earlier of all the other surrounding jurisdictions who have a meals tax. It is a common revenue. In Virginia, it helps to relieve the pressure on the real estate tax. And the Board of Supervisors did go ahead and decide to put that on the ballot for citizens to decide. There's also been many opportunities, and we have asked the General Assembly to allow the Board of Supervisors in the past to be able to have a little more authority to create what would be seen as a fair menu of taxes, and that request has not been granted. And consequently, the only way that the Board of Supervisors can create a more balanced menu of taxes is to have to go to a referendum. We know that we've had tough times with our school budgets, and we do have to somehow find a way to increase salaries for our teachers because we are not, we have lost our competitive edge. But this is an opportunity for Fairfax citizens to relieve some of the pressure that many people are concerned about on the real estate tax. This is an opportunity. And for better or for worse, we will get to decide yes or no. We've also, many of us have been asked, well, because we know that a lot of parents, there have been many parent advocacy organizations that are very much in support of a meals tax, and we have been asked if it passes, and the Board of Supervisors have been asked if this passes, how would this impact schools? And you will find, when you read the referendum on the ballot, it indicates from the Board of Supervisors their intent as to how the revenues would be used, and 70% would come to Fairfax County Public Schools. So it is only fair that the Board of Supervisors indicate the language that is on the referendum. So it is important that people become knowledgeable about this proposal. It does provide us an opportunity to, I think, provide a fair menu of revenues for the entire county. So I am pleased with this, with the presentation today. It answers a lot of questions that are being asked. And the Board of Supervisors have also wanted to know if this passes, how this would be used. And again, our need to pay our teachers more, we have lost our competitive edge, and it is difficult for us to go forward. So I welcome this presentation and the information that it contains, and I do urge citizens to become informed, to read the referendum carefully, and understand how it will go forward. It is a meals tax, it is not a grocery tax. Thanks.
Ms. McGlaughlin?
I very much appreciate the additional information that Ms. Strauss just shared. I think it's very important for the viewers to understand why it is, in fact, that we included this in tonight's business meeting. Before I say anything more, Mr. Foster apologized to be calling upon you as our Division Counsel, but one of the things I think the Board has been very careful of is how and where each of us individually as Board members and elected officials speak about the meals tax, because I do believe there is some sort of guidelines or restrictions to what we can say in advocacy or support of a meals tax or not, similar to the school bond. And so in listening to some remarks being made by our colleagues at the table, before I engendered to do the same, I wanted to get clarification from you. In our roles and in this setting here tonight in our business meeting, is it appropriate for us to speak individually about our beliefs about this meals tax? Or are we supposed to keep strictly to, this is what's going to be on the ballot, and this is how the school would, you know, try to allocate the funding if it were to come in?
I appreciate the question, Ms. McGlaughlin. Because we're in public session, I'm not going to get into a lot of detail. I will say this, really two things. I think that for tonight's purposes, because the presentation from Ms. Michael focused on, this is how the money would be spent under one scenario, which is the passage of the meal tax, that that really should be the focus of the discussion. The second point is that, just like with school bond referendum, you know, my advice to you, and this has been provided previously, I want to reiterate it, the advice to you is that you not, as in this case, state your individual positions in favor or against particular meals tax referendum. You don't do that when there are school bond referendum pending, and my advice is you similarly not do it with respect to the pending meals tax.
Okay, thank you. So to the audience who is probably wondering about maybe the differences of opinion among myself and our colleagues up here, I do want to at least state my viewpoint, that I think it was entirely appropriate, that as voters are trying to better understand the purpose of the meals tax, that when you see something that's being designated 70% to go to schools, as Ms. Strauss very carefully articulated, the Board of Supervisors and the public do want to understand, why is there a need, and what would you actually spend that funding on? And so I sort of differ with one of my colleagues in that I don't think this is a Santa Claus Christmas list. I think instead, it's actually being as transparent as we possibly can with our voters to say, this is how we would hope to target these very important funds that would be coming in from the ballot measure, and not to do so, I think, actually would be a disservice to our public. So as Ms. Strauss said, Dr. Garza, Ms. Michaels, I appreciate that in my mind, what you presented at the work session on Monday, what you're presenting now, is simply factual about where the school system would hope to target the money. And then it's for the voters to decide whether they think that has merit or not. And the final echoing point is that we're not going to be up here telling you whether it's a good tax or not a good tax. We are imploring every single voter, please become as informed and as knowledgeable as you can, and understand that the supervisors put it on the referendum, not because they are trying to tell you what to do, they're saying that this is a choice and a decision that they understand by law, the county residents need to decide.
Thank you, Ms. Hines.
Yes, thank you. So as long as we're trying to help the public understand better what the meals tax could do for the school system and what we might do with it, I just had a few questions. It's my understanding that if the meals tax is passed, it would provide the additional revenue that we would need to reinvest in our teacher salaries and in critical classroom needs. So that's what you have presented today. Thank you. And I just wanted to make sure that people understand kind of how we got where we are now with these unmet needs. And so this may be review for some people, but since 2008, revenues have not met growing enrollment and costs in the school system. So that in FY 2016, the year that, the fiscal year that just ended, the school system was spending $1,000 less in real dollars per child than in 2008. Is that correct, Ms. Michael?
That is correct. If you look back since 2008, FCPS has cut nearly $1 billion from our budget.
Right. And that has come through central office cuts, significant central office cuts, and it has come by raising class size, unfortunately, three times over that time, and also by freezing teacher pay, which is how we found ourselves in the position we're in. In FY 2016, we were fortunate that our, I'm sorry, for this FY 2017, we are fortunate now that our funders at the local and state level, particularly the local level, gave the school system some added revenue so that we are not only able to meet increasing enrollment and costs, but we are able to make some reinvestments, particularly in our teacher salary scale. Is that right?
That is correct.
So at this point, we are no longer spending $1,000 less per child than 2008, but we are still, I believe, spending less in real dollars per child than we were in 2008. Is that correct?
Yes. When you look at our cost per pupil adjusted for inflation, we are spending less than we were prior to the economic downturn.
Okay. So we have begun our reinvestment, and we have begun to turn the corner in recovery for the school system. And I just wanted to also mention, when there are questions about the efficiency of the school system, Ms. Michael, three years ago, we had an efficiency study done by Gibson Consulting, which, as I recall, took a look at the whole school system, looking for a fish, found about $10 million in opportunities for greater efficiency. Is that right?
Correct. That was $10 million over a five-year period of implementation.
Right. Over a five-year period of implementation in a $2.6, $2.7 billion budget. And is it correct that the school system has made all of those savings?
The school system implemented all of those savings in the very first year.
In the very first year. So we actually did better than we were asked to do by the consultant?
Correct.
And that consultant was paid by the state?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. And when it comes to our return on investment for the school system in this community, that is a very good question. And in fact, we have a report that we have just recently published by Stephen Fuller, who is a world-renowned economist at George Mason University, and I believe he will be coming to speak to the School Board in October. But I have one conclusion from that report that I thought I would check with you, which is, Dr. Fuller looked at the economic impact of the school system on the local economy and found that Fairfax County Public Schools is second only to the federal government in our positive effect on the local economy. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Corbett Sanders?
Thank you. And along the same lines, in understanding a bit more about the meals tax. And along the same lines, in understanding a bit more about the meals tax, I understand that 70% will go to the schools and 30% will go towards parks, libraries, infrastructure, and tax relief for seniors. Is that accurate?
Their exact language is dedicated to county services, capital improvement, and property tax relief.
Excellent, thank you. Do you have a understanding of what percentage of school funding comes from property taxes as a national average versus here in Fairfax County?
So I know when we look even just within the state of Virginia, Fairfax County, we're very reliant on our local government in terms of providing us with revenue, right? The average jurisdiction in Virginia receives less than half of their funding from the local government, and we're receiving 2/3, about 75%. And when you look at the funding that FCPS is receiving from our local government, the majority of that is coming from property taxes.
Somebody suggested that's 65%. Is that accurate?
So the average jurisdiction in Virginia, I should say, is receiving more than half of their funding from the state.
No, I'm here in Fairfax County.
In Fairfax County, it's more than 65% of the revenue is coming from property taxes.
Okay, so if we were to receive money from a meals tax, would that be rolled into how the state values, how much they would reinvest in Fairfax County through the local composite index? Or is the meals tax something that would fall outside of their formula?
So it will fall outside of the formula, so as a result of the meals tax, we do not expect that the state will lower the funding that they're providing.
So actually, any meals tax revenue would actually stay here in Fairfax County? Is that what you're saying?
That is correct.
So instead of us sending money down to Richmond and then getting a very small piece of it back, about 22 cents, is that correct?
Correct.
Then, in this case, we would keep the 100% here in Fairfax County?
Correct.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to just clarify one point on the teacher scale master line slide, I think it's slide 12. Just, could you tell me the two comparator districts?
Yes, comparator districts 1 and 2 are Arlington County and Alexandria City.
Okay. Just, I mean, you have to describe it because it's not here, but other counties, where do they fall? Like, can you describe, like, where Prince William would fall, or where Louden would fall on the?
So when you average all of the surrounding school districts together, that is the line that we show as being the market average, the projected market average for FY '18. So it would be the light blue line.
Okay.
If you go back, we can go back to the compensation study, and we do show where each jurisdiction falls relative to FCPS.
Is there, are there, is there an outlier district that is folded in, or more than one outlier at the top and bottom, that sort of are outside of a bunched range?
So when we look at all the surrounding school districts, when we look at all the districts that have salaries that are higher than FCPS, in total, while some of them are smaller jurisdictions, they have more teachers in total than FCPS. So combined, all of the districts whose salaries were above FCPS's, when we did our FY '16 market scale, those districts combined have more teachers in total than FCPS has.
I'm not sure that answers what I was getting at. What I was getting at is if, if there's one outlier district that pays substantially more than, say, any other district, or if there's one that falls significantly below, it would make sense to me to sort of throw out the outliers and average the other district compensations to sort of get a truer sense of what a real market average would be, because it could be skewed, is my question. Did you think about that, or is that an analysis you could provide the Board?
We certainly can provide the Board with each of the surrounding jurisdictions. I don't recall any jurisdictions being outside of what you would consider a normal range as we were calculating that average.
Okay, so there wasn't, you didn't sense there was any outlier district particularly?
Not particularly.
Okay. I appreciate Ms. Hines bringing up the report from Dr. Fuller, because that sort of goes to my questions on the meals tax, and maybe the answers are in that report. Ms. Michaels, are you familiar with the report enough to know whether or not you can speak to whether something is in it if I ask a question?
Sure, I don't have the full report in front of me, but I'll tell you if I know.
Yeah, so, so one of the concerns that I have is that we've heard tonight that we have nearly 30% of our students are free and reduced meals. So do we know, from the economic analysis, what segment of the meals economy will be generating most of the tax dollars, or is there, or is it an even distribution? Where I'm getting at is that segments of the socioeconomic scale will eat at different places than other sections of the socioeconomic scale. So is that analysis available to know how much it impacts?
So the economic impact study did not look at the meals tax at all, right? And I don't have any of the projected sources of meals tax revenue with me.
Yeah, so my concern is with the meals tax is that, well, it makes a lot of sense in the sense that it spreads it to just everybody who has meals or buys prepared meals. I'm concerned that it impacts actually the, those who have the least capacity to pay additional tax revenues, amounts in taxes, and it may seem like small change to, to those who are able and can afford to go out to dinner frequently, but that for many people who maybe don't have those resources, a small change could make a significant difference. The, go ahead.
I do know that they're projecting that 28% of the meals tax revenue will come from non-county residents.
Okay. Do you know if the economic analysis includes anything sort of beyond the, just the projections of income? Does it talk about impact on the business community? Do we have input from, say, the Chambers of Commerce on?
If I might interrupt, Mr. Wilson, the economic study that Dr. Fuller did?
Yeah.
It had nothing to do with the meals tax. It was just what, what happens when the taxpayer here in our county invests in the school system? What does that translate into in terms of economic impact? So we would not, what have, I mean, I find, we would not be able to answer some of your questions.
Thanks for clarifying. But was there any economic analysis provided by, say, the Chamber or the Restaurant Association in terms of, you know, what is the impact on jobs? What is the projected impact on business, the business community itself? Because this goes to an issue of, part of Fairfax County's attractiveness nationally is, is our tax structure on businesses. So we need to, I guess I feel like that would be helpful, because we have to compare and balance, because other options, you know, may make more sense.
I'm going to help Kristen here. I'm not sure, she's one of the brightest minds you'll find anywhere around, you know, the finance and fiscal management, but I'm not sure that she came prepared tonight to, you know?
If she doesn't have the information, that's why I sort of.
And I'm not sure, yeah, I'm not sure that she would be, or we would be, the right people to answer some of those questions.
Okay.
They may be available somewhere, I'm sure the Chamber, you know.
Yeah, I think if, maybe the Board of Supervisors.
The county may have done some of that analysis.
Yeah, maybe the Board of Supervisors has done some information. I think it'd be helpful for us to see it as well, particularly if we're going to be talking about it in the public forum, I think it would be helpful to have as much information as we can gather to discuss the merits, because it's all part of, in particular, how it impacts our families in the Fairfax County Public Schools is an important element that I'd like to drill down on a little bit. Thank you.
Mrs. Hop?
Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Michaels. One of the things I really appreciated about the presentation on the meals tax, how we would spend it, is really that it highlights what we desire to spend in our fiscal forecast, which is on our teachers and critical needs in the classroom. And I agree with my colleagues that we really want to make sure that those who are going to be going out and voting on this, that they are knowledgeable, and how is it going to go to the schools, and what percents are going to go to the schools. But I do want to just make sure in that, that we are, that we are giving the full story as well. You know, I know a lot of phrases were used, this will affect those that are dining out, but as a matter of fact, it will affect those who are going to pick up a rotisserie chicken on the way home, because that's prepared. It'll, a deli sandwich on the way home, a salad at the salad bar at the grocery store. So I think that's an important fact. Also, it was referred to as an additional revenue, and we discussed on Monday that we actually are not sure it's going to be an additional revenue, because there's not a non-supplant clause in it for the Board of Supervisors, meaning that there's no set transfer amount for the operating fund, so they could transfer less in substitution for what they're transferring in the 70% of the meals tax. So I think that's important as well. It was also mentioned that this is an opportunity to relieve pressure on real estate tax, and, you know, obviously, one of the big needs of the county is the schools, and the Board of Supervisors realize that, and they've certainly invested this last year. And they had to raise the real estate tax to do that. And if this meals tax passes, and we get the additional $67 million, if it actually ends up being additional, the following year, because of baseline budgeting, that recurring revenue is already going to be spent, and we'll need additional revenue again, which the meals tax won't relieve, which probably means it's going to fall on real estate tax again. So I do appreciate the conversation and all my colleagues' comments, and that we can just continue to inform and figure out how we can help our kids and our schools. Thanks.
Ms. Palchik?
Hi, thank you, Ms. Michael. Couple questions, I think some have been asked. I'm just trying to get a big, better picture for us of the funding at the state and local level. Is it correct, I don't know if you have the answer to this, that in Virginia, while we are at the top 10 for GDP, we are still at the bottom 10 for funding on education?
That is correct.
Thank you. And currently, it's about 15% of our budget that comes from the state?
That's state aid. When you add sales tax to that, it would just be just over 20%.
Okay, perfect. I've been trying to take a look a little bit at the history of our county budget. I don't know how familiar you are with it, and the trends, and it seems to me from the graphs I've been looking at, that since 2008 and before, the percentage of the county budget coming from real estate taxes has increased at least 7%. Is that correct? I don't know if you know.
I don't have the trends of what source of the county's revenue is coming from real estate taxes, but I know currently it's about 65%.
Apologize, I was distracted by a colleague. Is it? Oh, I can't even hear it. Okay, thank you. Sorry, would you mind repeating that, Ms. Michael?
So I don't have historical trends with me in terms of the county's revenue source, but currently, real estate taxes makes up about 65% of the county's revenue. And when you look overall, the state limits or caps 90% of the revenue that's coming from non-property taxes that the county collects.
Okay, perfect, yeah. From what I see, it was below 60% for many years. And I know you shared this before, say, a person went out and spent, you know, $5 to $9 on a meal, which is maybe the price of a takeout meal, what would be the amount of meals tax on that?
Sure, so a $5 fast food meal, the meals tax would cost an additional 20 cents, and if that was a $10 fast casual meal, it would cost an additional 40 cents.
$10, perfect. And someone, you know, was able to go out and spend $50 to $100 on a meal, what would be the tax on that?
Correct, on a $100 restaurant meal, it would be an additional $4.
Okay, so, so a few cents, a few dollars at the most for a large meal. And just to reiterate, I know you said that before, all of that 100% remains in the county?
Correct.
And my understanding is that because, you know, and I, my mom's a caterer, and I know that there are things related around collecting and passing on taxes, has the county decided the relief they would give or the support to restaurants and others collecting the tax in order to do that?
Sure, if the meals tax referendum is passed by voters, the Board of Supervisors may hold hearings in February of 2017 to adopt the ordinance establishing the rate for the meals tax and the terms of the tax, including allowing businesses that must collect and remit the tax to retain a small percentage to compensate them for their efforts and cost.
Okay, thank you. And do we know businesses, you know, surrounding us in the city of Falls Church, city of Fairfax, Vienna, Henry Coe County passed it a few years ago, do we know if it hurt overall sales in their restaurants?
I know when you look, a meals tax is very common on the presentation itself. We shared the local surrounding jurisdictions that charge a meals tax, but when you look statewide, there are many other jurisdictions that charge a tax, as well as the District of Columbia that have that 10% tax.
Okay, thank you. And this, I believe, and I'm very glad that we've made the decision to really focus on teacher salaries. I know we, you mentioned this, is Dr. Amy here? Dr. Amy, how many openings did we have this year for teachers in our schools? Ms. McLaughlin? We started the school year with 169 open, full-time openings. Openings, okay. I know this was brought up in earlier, schools such as Longfellow, that did not struggle in the past to hire teachers and to have good candidates, or even struggling this year, so, Ms. McLaughlin?
Again, I'm sorry.
So the understanding, I know it is hard for us to track that, I know you know how many openings. Is there any way for us to track, you know, candidates that our principals lose to other districts, and how many?
Not necess, we can, we can track our attrition rate on an annual basis, and one of the things we're working on is part of the premier workforce is enhancing our exit interview, and how we do that with our staff that are on staff and leave. But in terms of candidates that are not employed by FCPS and take jobs to their places, that's much tougher to track.
But there was a principal survey last year?
That's about the only way we can collect information like that, and we're not unique in that, in that challenge. You know, other school systems across the country are challenged with that too. How do we collect that kind of information? Best we can do is ask our principals.
Right, and I understand that this is.
And even, just to add on to what Dr. Garza was saying, and even that was the principals' perceptions. It wasn't like they had sat down with every single one of their staff members and had those conversations. And so while we can ask our principals, you know, commonly, the most, the most common reason we hear from people leaving is for personal reasons, and that's what they usually give us. And so then we sometimes have to read between the lines and decipher what they might mean by that.
Right, no, I understand. And so leaving, but also, you know, in this national teacher shortage, I know that if we are not competitive locally, it even compounds that even more, I believe. Correct, okay, thank you very much. I think that's all for now. Thank you, Ms. Michael.
All right, seeing no go-bags, I'll just make a couple of brief comments myself. So I wanted to make sure I was clear, Ms. Michael, that the two jurisdictions where you're showing the highest pay scales there in our competitor jurisdictions, that's Arlington and Alexandria, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I just wanted to, to make note that both of those jurisdictions do have a 4% meals tax. I also wanted to say that I appreciated the conversation at the work session. I thought that it was important that we, as a board, made clear that the, that we remain committed to going on the path of investing in teacher salaries, particularly at that mid-level range where we know we need to be getting that up. And of course, we made the first investment this year. And so for our commitment that if, if the meals tax does pass, that that will be our top priority for the, I believe we said the vast majority of the revenues would go to continuing that investment in our, in our teacher salaries, and I think that that was an important statement to make. And I can certainly hope we can continue to make that investment. Ms. Michael, thank you so much. We appreciate the excellent presentation. We now go to action items. Item 3.01, Fairfax County Public Schools Strategic Plan Update. I call on Mrs. Strauss for motion.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I move that the School Board adopt the changes to the four goal areas of the Fairfax County Public Schools Strategic Plan: Student Success, Carrying Culture, Premier Workforce, and Resource Stewardship.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Moon. Mrs. Strauss, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, I will speak very briefly. We had an in-depth report on our strategic plan at a work session on Monday. The, it is our intention to review the strategic plan every year. It is, it is not a static document, it is something that needs reviewing and updating regularly. This time- This time, the recommended changes were not significant. It did not change the direction of our strategic plan in any major way. However, two items, I think, are of interest. One is on the summary tables, information regarding revenues per each proposed project going forward was added. And now it shows in those cases where a project will be funded by re-appropriating money. In other words, no additional revenues needed. They're also through symbols of dollar signs, just as when you go to a restaurant online and find out if it's an expensive or inexpensive restaurant. Our strategic plan now can show if a project would be a low-cost, a medium-cost, or potentially a high-cost item, so that it gives the School Board and the community an idea of at least a range of costs needed, or perhaps no cost, no additional cost at all. So it was something that the School Board did ask for when we were in our retreat last summer. Another item that was recommended but raised considerable discussion was the Passages Report, a report that has been presented to the Board a number of times in the past. And it was initially recommended that the Passages Report no longer be presented, that the information be subsumed in the other reports. However, many of my colleagues are very interested in the same information, and so we've asked staff to come back to us with an actual plan as to how we can get that same information that was contained in the Passages Report. So those were the particular changes, and the Board does need to affirm the changes this evening, and I encourage my colleagues to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Strauss. Mr. Moon, would you like to speak to your second?
Actually, it was pretty well covered by Mr. Strauss, but I just want to reiterate the requests made by some of the Board members at the work session to Superintendent and other staff about Passages Report.
Dr. Garza, did you want to speak?
Yes, I just wanted to add a couple of things. The Board spent 14 months developing the plan initially, and I just thought that was an important point. Lot of community input. I think we had over 30,000 people that weighed in. So it wasn't the intention of the Board to dramatically rewrite it, but to update it, that it is a living document. I am proud of the fact that the document does clearly articulate the things that we're working on, so it is a guiding document that our public can read to know what we're thinking about in terms of the future of the school system. So I think it's a wonderful document for our community to see kind of the direction and where we're headed. But it is a living document, and it does change on an annual basis. The Board also, in terms of updating it this year, spent some time at the retreat this July, and then spent some time at the recent work session discussing the changes. So I just wanted to point that out to the public. Thank you.
Mrs. Corbett Sanders?
I wanted to take the opportunity to thank you. Thank you for including the numbers. I love the dollar signs. I know this is a movement towards what I am deeply committed to, which is having a close linkage between our budgeting and our strategic plan, and I think this is an excellent first step. So thank you very much for doing that.
Ms. Palchuk?
Thank you. I want to thank you and two of your new leadership team members for your updates that I'm very much a fan of, one of them being improving our focus on our employees. So thank you, Dr. Ramey, for leading on that. And the other is including the update on having our community partners join us and ensuring that we improve family engagement. So I believe Dr. Duran helped make that possible, so thank you for those two.
All right. Seeing no further requests to speak, I will call for the vote. The vote is on the motion that the School Board adopt the changes to the four-goal areas of the Fairfax County Public Schools Strategic Plan: Student Success, Caring Culture, Premier Workforce, and Resource Stewardship. All in favor, please raise your hands. That vote is unanimous with Mr. Wilson away from the table. The motion passes. We turn to item 3.02, Governance Committee Recommendation Regarding HRAC, and I call on Mr. McElveen for the motion.
I move that the Board approve phasing out the current Human Relations Advisory Committee and incorporating their work into other advisory committees, such as the Minority Student Achievement Oversight Committee and the School Health Advisory Committees.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Ms. McLaughlin. Mr. McElveen, would you like to speak?
So over the past couple of years, anyone that's been following this Board has witnessed our efforts to streamline and focus. This effort has taken some work, and it's certainly not over yet. But this is a first step in trying to align our citizen advisory committees with our strategic plan and better reflect and be useful to the Board. And so this change was communicated to the members of the Human Relations Advisory Council last night, and as I communicated to my fellow Board members, the members of the committee fully understood the need for the change. They, of course, had plenty of input, both on the scope, the structure and composition of the new, what is to be called, the Human Resources Advisory Committee. And that feedback will be communicated to Ms. McLaughlin and her fellow members of the Governance Committee and Ms. Hines, who will be championing that new committee, based on my understanding. So in the coming months, we will have that exciting project before us. But I would tell the members of the Human Relations Committee here tonight what I told them last night, which is that this Board truly appreciates all the work they have done for this system over the years, and we will continue to listen to them. We will continue to make sure that those organizations that were part of the former HRAC will be somehow incorporated into the work of this system so that we don't lose those vital voices. So with that, Ms. McLaughlin.
Ms. McLaughlin?
I guess, in addition to Mr. McElveen's important remarks and expressing appreciation to the current members of HRAC, I do want to just emphasize that the goal here really was to try and make sure that the work of our advisory committees really can help our School Board do its very best in governing the system. And for many, many years, the Human Relations Advisory Committee has helped this Board be more responsive to all of its stakeholders, and so that is to be absolutely appreciated. But when we did, as Governance Committee members this past year, look at how we could streamline the work of the Board, we recognized that quite a few of the areas that Human Relations focused on is also an important part of the work that some of our other committees do. And yet, we did not have a Human Resources Advisory Committee for the over 24,000 employees that serve full-time in Fairfax County schools. And so I do hope that my colleagues tonight will join Mr. McElveen and I in supporting this motion before you. I do think this will help our Board's work in a very positive way, and I very much look forward to, as Governance Chair, receiving the input from the Human Relations Committee on how we can ensure that the great work they were doing continues to be a focus and attended to with our other advisory committees.
Thank you. Mrs. Corbett Sanders? Oh, you, I see. Okay. Mrs. Palchuk? And Ms. Palchuk, did you wish to speak? Ms. Palchuk, did you wish to speak?
My mic seems to be buzzing. No, I forgot the--
I beg your pardon. All right, well--
I'm sorry. Technical issues.
That's quite all right. So seeing no other individuals wanting to speak, I did just want to thank Mr. McElveen for meeting with the committee last night and talking with them about the transition and getting their thoughts, which is very important. I do want to reiterate that the work that the HRAC has been extremely valuable over the years, and we value it greatly, and we are committed to continuing with that work just in another place. So with that, I will call for the vote. The vote is on the motion that the Board approve phasing out the current Human Relations Advisory Committee and incorporating their work into other advisory committees, such as the Minority Student Achievement Oversight and School Health Advisory Committees. All in favor, please raise your hands. Hines, Palchuk, Schultz, Corbett Sanders, Strauss, Evans, Moon, McLaughlin, and McElveen. All opposed? All abstaining? Mrs. Huff, that motion passes. We now turn to the Consent Agenda. Our adopted Rules of Parliamentary Procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the Board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through Board review, and the documentation has been provided to all Board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any Board member prior to the meeting. 4.01, appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the agenda item. 4.03, adopt the lactation support programming policy as detailed in the agenda item. And I just want, I'm sorry, am I on a different? I think, okay, so that was, that was 4.02? Okay. 4.02, adopt the lactation support programming policy as detailed in the agenda item. 4.03, confirm the separations for the period beginning July 1, 2016, and ending July 31, 2016, and for the period beginning August 1, 2016, and ending August 31, 2016. 4.04, appoint individuals to serve a one-year term on the Challenge Materials Interdepartmental Review Committee as detailed in the agenda item. Is there any objection to approving the Consent Agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the Consent Agenda is approved. Item 5, this is new business. The following items are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 5.01, award the contract for the chiller replacements at Chantilly High School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the School Board. 5.02, award the contract for the White Oaks Elementary School renovation project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the School Board. 5.03, approve the addition of the guidelines and application for School Board recognition of outstanding student teams, ensembles, and publications as appendices in the Strategic Governance Manual, and send annual notice to staff. We now go to Superintendent Matters, and I call on Dr. Garza.
I'm going to pass tonight. Thank you.
All right. Well, then we go directly to Board Committee Reports. The next agenda item is Board Committee Reports, and I call on Ms. McLaughlin for a report on the Governance Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Just briefly, for my colleagues, I just wanted to update you on the things we covered at the September 14 Governance Committee Meeting. One of the first things that we talked about was the governance work on the student recognition program. We have basically, as a committee, unanimously agreed to the draft procedures, and they will be detailed for you in Chairman's Notes. They will be posted as new business and then placed on the Consent Agenda because we really don't foresee that there will be any debate on what's being proposed. However, as all of our colleagues know, if at any time you see something on the Consent Agenda that you would like to move over to an action item, we can do it at that time. Right now, our first student recognition process is tentatively scheduled for our October 20th Business Meeting. We also then talked about, as you might recall from our September 8 Board Meeting, the sponsorship policy, corporate sponsorship policy. And because the Board has deferred that to its December 1 Board Meeting, we did have a conversation with staff about ensuring that we will be soliciting information from the Chambers of Commerce, the high school athletic directors and directors of student activities, as well as current business partners regarding the allocation of funds. In addition, I was very pleased that for the three of us who were there at Governance, we unanimously support a revision to the language. It's a small revision, but an important one, where we will be bringing to the Board that it's important in terms of where there is the revenue sharing beyond $10,000, that the revenue sharing begins after the first $10,000. So this way, the schools aren't finding themselves that at $10,001, they suddenly are only going to get $3,500 and one penny, or, so, anyway, or $1. So that was, I think, an important change that we caught in the language. But also, I wanted to make sure my colleagues understood that we recognized, looking at the draft policy, that it's probably one of the most detailed we've ever had. And part of it is because not having a framework for corporate sponsorships, we kind of put everything, including the kitchen sink, in it. So after speaking with staff, which we had both Mr. Foster and Mr. Smith, Murray Smith was there, that the Governance Committee requested that staff draft an actual regulation for a corporate sponsorship, and they would take some of the detailed language from the draft policy that you all have seen, put it into a regulation, streamline the policy to match more of what a typical Board policy looks like. Governance Committee will review it, and if we think it's appropriate, then, of course, bring it for the Board's full consideration before it would be voted on. But we think that actually might put us in a better position to following sort of the Board's standard protocol for what policy looks like versus regulation. And then we also had a conversation about one of our forum topics, the process for School Board advocacy letters. And the questions basically talked about, would we want to add something in the Governance Manual about the use of letterhead, or anything about notice provisions to give adequate time for Board members to consider these type of advocacy letters? We did not have consensus on that issue, so I will be visiting with Chairman Evans on how we might bring that to an upcoming work session where the full Board can decide if there's any sort of guidance surrounding those advocacy letters that the Board would like to see, since we couldn't get consensus at the Governance Committee. And so that was the three things that we talked about at Governance. This is my first time ever reporting as a Chair, so I apologize to my colleagues if I'm giving you too much information, but at least there's no doubt you know now what we talked about at Governance.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. And I call on Mr. McElveen for a report from the Public Engagement Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. And Ms. McLaughlin's report reminds me how much I miss the Governance Committee. So at PEC this past Monday, we had a very exciting 13-minute meeting at which we discussed two issues. The first was the AAP Summit, which was forwarded from a forum to the PEC. And so in discussing that issue, we believe we will have a proposal coming to the Board at the October full-day work session as part of a PEC work session. So you have that to look forward to. And then, secondly, we discussed our Student Leadership Development Program, which you can see is being widely blasted out. My colleague, Ms. Chu, even mentioned it tonight. Thank you, Ms. Chu. And that program, we will be receiving applications, and we will be choosing participants in the coming months, so look forward to that.
Thank you very much, Mr. McElveen. Ms. Darnak Kopek, I know you were at a back-to-school night. You've arrived just in time to make your skip report, unless you'd like Ms. McLaughlin to make it for you while you settle in.
Well, I will make it, yes, thank you. It wasn't my daughter's back-to-school night, so I apologize for my lateness. But the Skipped Executive Committee met this month, and what we will do is, we will talk about-- about, it was a planning meeting where we talked about what we will do over the following months. We have, the first thing, the issues and the topic for the coming year are going to be the pre-K strategic plan, community schools, more about our equity policy for the equity statement that we, both of our boards passed, and the attendance, our attendance issues in schools, and the system of care implementation. So we had some other things, talking what possibilities, but that's a very full agenda, actually, for the year already. But other topics that were mentioned were the restorative justice, the digital divide, you know, and the issues that poverty and how that impacts our educational system. So it was a very, just so people know, the Executive Committee meeting is a smaller group that meets, and then, and it's about seven people in that group. And then, the larger Skippt Committee has approximately 40 individuals from around the county. And this is something that we feel like we are in the place now where we are moving forward at a good pace, and we will be reporting out, Ms. McLaughlin or I will be reporting out on a regular basis to all of you.
Thank you. We now go to Board Matters, and I call on Mr. McElveen.
I pass. Thanks.
Ms. Darnett Kofax?
As you had just heard, I was at my daughter's back-to-school night. I just want to thank, I've attended several back-to-school nights, and I want to thank all the parents who are coming out and being supportive of your children, getting to know your children's teachers. And we have several yet next week, so please continue to do that because, as I say on my back-to-school message, that the more we know, the more our teachers know about your students, the more successful they will be. And you are their, we, together as parents and teachers, the administrators, we're all working partners in our children's education. So please come out, please continue to support, join your PTA boosters, all of those things. And thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
I'll pass. Thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Just a couple of things. First of all, I want to extend my appreciation to all of my colleagues. As you know, we were presented with a request from the Director of the Keller Center that we help support their application to receive some funding from the Virginia Department of Health so that we might extend more psychiatric services here in Northern Virginia. And so, I just wanted you all to know that not only was your support meaningful, the fact that the board supervisors also agreed unanimously to issue that letter of support, I think it's absolutely critical that we all come together. And as Ms. Darnett Kofax noted earlier with the successful children and youth policy team, this is just another example where we're bringing the public bodies along with our nonprofits and other community organizations together to speak in a unified voice about the needs of our county and our citizens. And I also had the opportunity to tour the Anova Hospital, where they do offer the psychiatric facilities, and have an even deeper appreciation for the need here in our county. And so, I wanted, again, just publicly thank you all for that. I think it is another example of how we can do important work beyond just the school board governance. And then, I also wanted to speak a little bit tonight to some of our guest speakers. I always appreciate our citizens who come out to speak regardless of where they are in their positions, because that helps better inform the board of where our public is. But I did want to provide what I believe is just an important clarification, which is, this board continues to be absolutely committed to public engagement. And while we did update Policy 1450 about nondiscrimination and the important message that sends to every citizen and child in this county about our commitment to not discriminate against anyone, beyond that, we remain committed to the public engagement on any changes that would then come out of what it means for nondiscrimination protection. As some may be aware, the United States Supreme Court is reviewing this issue. And so, the school system recognizes that while we will continue our commitment to public engagement, our school system, as well as many around the country, do need to see where the courts are going to come down on this issue. And it's prudent, therefore, that we use that as part of our guidance. But it is concerning to me that we have citizens who, in speaking tonight even, are concerned that this board has been tone-deaf. And I do believe that this board continues to honor its very important commitment to being engaged with our public. And so, I absolutely encourage any citizen, if you're watching here tonight and you're concerned and you believe that we haven't been engaged, I personally would welcome any emails so I can better understand that, and we can help have better dialogue. So with all of that, I will just say, as a parent with a junior in high school, it's my last one in the nest. I, like all the other parents, are definitely still trying to adjust to the new school year and all of the things that administratively come with having your children, especially in high school, multiple teachers. So to all of our teachers and administrators in the building, thank you so much for making this start of the school year an exciting one for our kids. And please know that this board is always here to listen and understand if there are concerns that we can really help engage in and strengthen our children's experience in their educational process.
Mr. Moon?
Pass.
Mrs. Strauss?
Pass.
Mrs. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, I just wanted to let the community know that on October 1, we will be opening a brand-new teen center in Mount Vernon at the original Mount Vernon High School. This provides an excellent opportunity for our youth in that area to take advantage of sports and other activities. So just come on out on October 1.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yeah, a couple of things. I know, and I've gotten a very few, and I think that's a testament, but a few emails concerning the fire, small fire, that we had, that was a construction fire at West Springfield High School this week. I do want to compliment staff. My phone started ringing just after 6 o'clock in the morning, or maybe a little bit before, to advise me about the status, and that the decision was made that the fire chief was not able to clear the smoke out of the building and to, and extremely rare, I think the first time maybe in five and a half years, I had a single school closing just for those issues. We had multiple conversations over the course of the morning, and I was particularly concerned for special education students who could potentially already be on their way to school. And a couple of people expressed concerns because there were students who were on their way walking. They are high school students, and parents were at work. I really don't know what we could have done better, but we are exploring it, and I am talking to staff about ways in which communication went and if there's any way to improve that. But I appreciate, overall, the understanding and the responsiveness of the West Springfield community as they get through a very difficult year with the start of construction. I want to thank, there's a host of community members that I met with about some activities at the new National Museum for African-American History and Culture, and I look forward to continuing to work with them and with expanding that work and congratulating them for the opening of that new museum. And I imagine that I look forward to activities happening within FCPS as the museum gets up and going. And I had a community meeting last night with residents from Fairfax Station, Lorton, Burke area, and I want to thank them for that invitation, and several other, actually, Mr. Wilson made the trek over, and I appreciate that. I'll be meeting this weekend, on Sunday, with some members of our Korean community, and I want to thank them for that invitation. I want to highlight, out of the back-to-school nights, again, to show the grit and determination not only of FCPS parents, but of FCPS administrators and teachers. The back-to-school night at Robinson was done without electricity. There was a major blowout at a neighborhood transfer station, and all of the parents walked along with our cellphones lighting the hallways. And I actually sat with a teacher in absolute darkness in inside classroom, and it was just amazing. Nobody would give up. We conducted a silent auction for the cheerleaders, and, I mean, the whole thing went through. And I really, it was just a testament to how committed people were to meeting their kids' teachers. So that was a terrific activity. And finally, you know, I know that there's been a lot of news out and some commentary that's out there. Things have been going on on this board, and Dr. Garza is going to go on to new paths, and we wish her well. It's going to be a trying time for this board, certainly. Engaging in a national search and hiring a superintendent was probably one of the most grueling things I've been through as a board member, and I don't wish it on our four new board members and the rest of us, our veterans, cutting our teeth for the second or third or however many time. But I do expect, and had, as a part of my back-to-school night message, and I've had extremely good feedback, except for one odd exchange with one teacher who somehow took it as, "I hate teachers." I love teachers, and I love parents. And the whole point is to get you engaged. And frankly, I think a lot of people have been anesthetized to what's happening with their kids, what's happening in the school system, and this is your opportunity to be engaged. And, you know, we need to hear the good and the bad and the ugly. And as we embark on this process, I endeavor that this has as much community engagement, and it was reflective, because it's $3 billion of your money, and that the parents stay engaged with your children's education. And it doesn't mean that I don't like teachers. It means that I believe in parental primacy, and that parents are the first and primary educators of their children. And if you're not engaged in your child's education, the bill's going to come due sooner or later. And it's much easier to be engaged upfront and be working with actively on a part of your child's education, even if it means holding up your cellphone and doing back-to-school night in the dark.
Mrs. Huff?
Pass.
Ms. Palchek?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things. First of all, I want to thank Ms. Blankensina and Mr. Rigby for reminding us about the civil and civil discourse tonight. Really appreciated that. Second, I really want to give a shout-out to my 12th grade English teacher, Ms. Nelson, who had us read "The House on Mango Street," and it changed my life and helped me find my voice. And I was very touched today to see Sandra Sisneros receive the National Merit Award at the White House. So to all of our English teachers and all of our teachers who inspire our kids every day, thank you, and thank you for doing that. And finally, a quick shout-out and thank you to the very energetic and fabulous world language team at Kilmer Middle School. I helped walk a parent over to one of the trailers and popped into their classrooms, realized it's my first time in the classroom back-to-school night not being a teacher. So I know it's a scary time, but you've all pulled off really amazing back-to-school nights, and I look forward to coming and co-teaching and hanging out in your classrooms.
Ms. Hines?
Yes, thank you. Just a few things. Looking forward to the Reston Multicultural Festival again this year on Saturday at the Lake Anne Plaza there, historic Lake Anne Plaza. It's always a wonderful time. We have a celebration and a ceremony for those who are just becoming citizens, so it really is a celebration of our multicultural culture in this county, which is a great strength for the school system. I also am looking forward to attending Fairfax Education Association's Put Kids First event next Friday, September 30. And I see Mr. Hickerson in the back there. Thank you for being here tonight, the head of FEA. Also, we just mentioned, since we talked a little bit about voting this year, Election Day is November 8, but early absentee voting starts very soon. In fact, tomorrow, I believe it starts tomorrow at the Central Government Center, Fairfax County Government Center, and it starts at the satellite offices in different parts of the county on October 1. You can find out more about that, and you can still register to vote as well. You can find out more information at fairfaxcounty.gov/elections.
Thank you, and this meeting is adjourned. The board will now make a motion to go into closed meeting to, one, protect the privacy of individuals and personal matters not related to public business pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A4 of the Code of Virginia; two, discuss and consider the employment and appointment of specific public employees pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1; and three, consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters.